But if we get some more folks coming in, just try to keep your, keep to your family and try to separate as best you can, and we would appreciate it. Thank you.
Welcome to our Tuesday, April 6th, 2021 meeting. A few housekeeping rules, please. We will hear four cases tonight. We will first have a staff report to summarize each case prior to any discussion the board members may have. We then ask the applicant to step up to the podium to ask or answer any questions. We ask the applicant to begin by stating their name and address for the record as these meetings are recorded. We will then ask for any public participation and again ask any participant to begin by stating their name and address. Please remember the topic of discussion needs to remain pertinent to the case being heard. The purpose of the planning and zoning board is to hear the cases and make recommendations to the Clay County Commission. The commission will review and decide the cases heard tonight on April 22nd, 2021 at 10:00 a.m. in this room. So could we begin tonight with a roll call of attendance, please?
Yes, Chairman. Terry Griffin?
Present.
David Rotis?
Present.
Chris Higgins?
Present.
Brad Scarlett?
Present.
Marvin Davis?
Present.
Chairman Tom Decker?
Present. Could we have a motion to approve the minutes of our March 2nd, 2021 meeting as presented?
Make a motion, approve.
Second.
Very well. To have a roll call vote?
David Rotis?
Approve.
Marvin Davis?
Approve.
Terry Griffin?
Approve.
Chris Higgins?
Appercedine.
Brad Scarlett?
Approve.
And Chairman Tom Decker?
Approve.
Motion carries.
Very well. The first case we will hear tonight is case number April 21-112-RZ/P. Could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Chairman. Would like to add the staff report as part of the official record.
So be it.
Uh, so I've got this one pulled up on the screen. Um, this is a bit of a unique case. We are basically taking three lots, moving some property lines around, and ending up with three lots. So currently, we have one roughly 10-acre lot that I'm clicking on that's showing in the green. And then this part in the green is actually considered two lots. It's a small, roughly 1-acre lot in the front, and then about 4 and 1/2 acres in the back. And I'll show you the plat. This was platted, I believe it's 1971. It's part of Dennison Heights. So you can see the three small 1-acre lots in the front, and then there was a large lot in the back. And that has changed since 1971. You can see, still see, here's one of the small 1-acre lots. Here's the second one that was shown on the plat, and here's the third one. So those still exist. Uh, what's happened since 1971 is that this middle small lot has purchased this back acreage here, and this small 1-acre lot here has purchased this back acreage here. So basically, Lot Number 4, which was shown on the plat back here, has gone away. Now technically, it didn't, technically go away because they did not replat to include this into one lot, or to include this into one lot. So technically, this is still one parcel. This is one parcel, and then we've got the 10 acres to the south. This lot is not part of the plat that we're discussing tonight. Now technically, they, they need to come back and replat their lot to make it legal with our regulations, but it's not part of what we're hearing tonight. So we're taking a 10-acre lot, basically splitting it in half. There's an existing house on this lot. It becomes a 5-acre lot and would be zoned R5, which, which is residential ranchette. And this 1-acre lot is taking a portion of that old Lot Number 4 and becoming Lot Number 1, which you can see here in the purple. It's a roughly 3 and 1/2-acre lot. And then we're not really creating an additional lot, but we're putting everything else that's left over into Lot Number 2, uh, that does not have a house on it at this point. It would be a buildable lot. This is about 6 and 1/2 acres. Its zoning would be R5 as well. It would match the same zoning as Lot 3 because it's between 5 and 10 acres. Um, each lot is required to have agricultural land preservation. Uh, I'm going to take off the coloring there, um, so you can see that a little bit better. The applicant has chosen to put the ALP area, uh, for Lot Number 2 in this area behind that 1-acre lot because there was concern by this property owner about having a house in this area. So they put their ALP area there so they cannot put a house in that area. And then you can see the ALP areas on the other two lots. Um, so we're taking three lots. We're making three lots, one with the possibility of having a new house on it. Uh, now you'll, I'm sure the commissioners probably noticed that we just have a little bit of road frontage right here for this lot. So, uh, we'll talk about the access in a minute. But this lot had to receive two variances. It received a variance for the amount of lot width, and it received a width-to-depth ratio. So I know the commissioners are aware that we have a 1 to 4 width-to-depth ratio. So whatever your frontage or width is, you take that times 4, and that's your maximum depth. But that case was heard in front of the Board of Zoning Adjustment, and that board granted the two variances, uh, because they felt that the case met the four criteria to receive those two variances. Uh, this property is located within the 1-mile, uh, range of the city of Liberty. Uh, staff did reach out to them and talked to, uh, the planning and zoning folks over at Liberty. Um, Liberty's comprehensive plan does not talk about property outside city limits, but the Liberty Planning and Zoning Staff indicated that they were okay with roughly 5-acre lots in this area. So we believe we're matching that. We've got a 3 and 1/2-acre lot, but we're making that bigger from a 1-acre lot, and then we've got two lots that are larger than 5 acres. Uh, it is located in the rural low-density tier, uh, and like I said, within the 1-mile bound, boundary with the city of Liberty. Uh, this is a rezoning case, so it was noticed in the Courier Tribune, and adjacent property owners were sent certified letters. There are five rezoning criteria, which are on Page 5 of the staff report. Uh, as far as outside agency review goes, the Highway Department has made comments that you can see on Page 5. Uh, and the one I want to point out is that the Lot Number, Proposed Lot Number 3, which would be this 5-acre lot here, it, at the driveway location, it does have a culvert tube, but it's buried. It's an old culvert tube. So you'll see that they are, um, stating that, uh, this lot needs a new culvert tube installed, and you'll notice that that's listed as one of the conditions in Exhibit A. Uh, the applicant received all their outside agency approvals. Uh, we talked about the two variances approved by the Board of Zoning Adjustment. Uh, and we talked about the ALP area being in this location to give the property owner here some buffering, uh, between them and the, the new proposed house. And then there was also discussion, uh, between staff and one of the adjacent property owners about the safety, uh, of this new driveway location. So the, the Highway Department has stated that the driveway for Proposed Lot 2, which would be in this area right here, uh, does meet the county sight distance standards. Uh, but there was discussion that, uh, or concern by a neighbor that it did not meet sight distance standards, and that was, uh, brought to the attention of staff, and that's why we included the pay, uh, the two pictures that are on Page 5 of the staff report that show the sight distance going in the two different directions. Planning and zoning staff is recommending approval of the rezoning, uh, and preliminary plat with the two conditions. The one condition that I discussed, which is the, uh, culvert tube being installed for Proposed Lot 3 before the recording of the final plat, and then some just changes to the right-of-way, uh, insert some changes on the plat. Uh, nothing major, I don't think, there. Um, I would be happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have, and the applicant is present as well.
All right. Thank you, Kip. Do any of the board members have questions for staff regarding the rezoning or preliminary plat of Silva Place? No discussion from the board? Is the, would applicant please step up to the podium, state your name and address?
And Holly, will you hit the button so the microphone's green?
Sorry. That's really loud.
That's all right. Can we start on?
I'm Holly Silva. My address is 1209 Robbins Circle. I am here with my husband, Mark Silva. We are the applicants.
Okay, very well. Uh, Ms. Silva, do you understand the staff's report, and do you have any questions or, or issues with the recommendations being made?
No, the only question they're not concerned, but ask is to passably remove the condition in regards to the culvert, only because there is one there. It is working. Um, we had the Highway Department come out. We understand that there's a road, or a new road that will be put in front of that culvert, and so the Mrs. Bush had agreed that when that time comes, we could put in the culvert then. But that would be our only ask or question that we have.
Well, I think that would become a, a final decision to be made on that at the appropriate time through the Clay County Highway Department.
Okay.
It's not really a big, big issue.
Okay.
Heally noted.
Okay.
You understand everything else, and you're good?
Yes.
All right. Very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I just make a comment for the Highway Department?
Yes, ma'am.
We really would like to have that tube replaced. It is there, but it is completely filled in with dirt. It is not running water through the culvert. I know that Ms. Bush has said that she does not have a problem with water across the driveway, but there is evidence on the edge of the road that the water is not running through the tube or the ditch. So we are asking that Ms. Silva replace the tube before she records the final plat.
All right. Well, that'll be a condition to be met upon approval, so.
We would like to keep that in there, if possible.
Very well.
If you're not asking Terry for a, another driveway permit?
No.
You're just asking for the tube replaced?
In fact, we were not able to find a driveway permit for that location, and we will waive the driveway fee and issue a driveway permit if that tube is replaced.
Okay. All right. Does the board have any other comments, or is there anyone in the public attendants that would like to comment on the case being heard? With no public comments and the board's satisfied of, call for a motion of the, to approve the rezoning of the Silva Place. Could have a motion for approval, please?
I'll move to approve.
Very well. To have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote?
Marvin Davis?
Approve.
David Rotis?
Approve.
Terry Griffin?
Approve.
Chris Higgins?
Approved.
Brad Scarlett?
Approved.
And Chairman Tom Decker?
Approve.
Motion carries.
I'd like to go ahead and move right into the preliminary plat of Silva Place, and I would ask for a motion for the approval of preliminary plat with the conditions attached as set forth in Exhibit A.
I'll move to approve with conditions.
Very well. Can we have a second?
Second.
Very well. To have a roll call vote?
Marvin Davis?
Approve with condition.
David Rotis?
Approve with condition.
Terry Griffin?
Approve with conditions.
Chris Higgins?
Approve with conditions.
Brad Scarlett?
Approve with conditions.
Chairman Tom Decker?
Approve with conditions.
Motion carries.
The second case we'll hear this evening is case number April 21-113F, and could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Chairman. Would like to add the staff report as part of the official record.
So be it.
So this is the final plat for Silva Place. Uh, the review procedures and submittal content for a final plat are handled under Section 151-3.6D of the 2011 Land Development Code. Based on everything presented to planning and zoning staff, uh, this request appears to substantially comply with the Land Development Code and the preliminary plat. Uh, this report is basically just a carryover of the final, uh, of the preliminary plat. Uh, you'll notice that staff is recommending approval with the same two conditions, uh, the one condition that was discussed with the culvert, and then, uh, some changes to the recording copies of the final plat. And again, I would be happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have.
All right. Thank you, Kip. Does the board have any questions for staff regarding the final plat to Silva Place? No questions from the board? Would the applicant please step up to the podium, state your name and address?
Hi, Holly Silva, 1209 Robbins Circle, Liberty, Missouri.
Ms. Silva, do you understand and agree with the staff's report?
Yes, I do.
Any questions for staff or the board?
No, I do not.
Sounds like the decision's already been made on the culvert pipe, huh?
Yeah.
Very well. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Is there anyone in the public attending that would like to comment on the case being heard? With no, uh, questions from public attendants or the board, I would call for a motion to approve the final plat of Silva Place with the conditions attached as set forth in Exhibit A. Could we have a motion, please?
I'll move to approve with conditions.
Thank you. Is that a second?
Second.
Very well. Can we have a roll call vote?
Marvin Davis?
Approve with conditions.
David Rotis?
Approve with conditions.
Terry Griffin?
Approve with conditions.
Chris Higgins?
Approve with conditions.
Brad Scarlett?
Approve with condition.
Chairman Tom Decker?
Approve with conditions.
Motion carries. And Chairman, I just want to let you know Debbie's going to give the next staff report.
Very well. All right. The next case we'll hear this evening is case number April 21-114-RZ/F. And could we have staff reports, please?
Yes, here is Dr. Doss. No question that, um, they, so this was agricultural?
Is your microphone on?
Oh, now I got it. Um, this was agricultural, and, uh, they're requesting it to be rezoned to R, R-1 resident, rural residential. And there'll be an agricultural land preservation on it. Um, this was, uh, Johnson Estates, which was done, I believe in 2004 or '07. Um, and, um, well, actually, okay, so, um, it's going from 20 acres to, uh, approximately to 10-acre lots. And, and why I'm saying approximately is you'll see to the south, there's, um, a private open space that the applicant has put in there. Um, and that is, um, over an acre of ground that he would like for his, um, kids to be able to have an area, children have an area that they can do things together on this property, um, possibly walking trails, riding, um, uh, there'll be some other things maybe that they can do in there, but they do not want any building in there. There will be no building on that track. Um, there's also out, um, agricultural land preservation. You'll see on the, on the south end of the lot and on the north end of lot, on the west lot, Lot 1A. Um, and, uh, it's in the natural resources tier and the urban services transition sub-tier, and it's within the Smithville Lake watershed. Um, this does, the lot acreages do comply with option B of the comprehensive plan. Um, there, as the applicants are proposing two lots that are above 5 acres. Um, and this was, the rezoning application was noticed in the Courier Tribune on March the 18th of 2021, and the adjacent property owners were sent their statutory law mandated 1,000-foot distance, um, on March the 18th also. Um, the petitioner should fully address the five rezoning criteria. Um, and the Clay County Highway Department has noted that there was a driveway permit for Lot 1A, which is the lot to the west, and, um, that was issued at the northwest corner of the lot. There was also a driveway proposed for Lot 2A will be at the top of the hill directly across from the existing driveway that's located at 6218 Northeast 140th. Uh, the current 40 feet of right-of-way that was dedicated with Johnson Estates is acceptable, and it is gravel servicing there with a speed limit of 35 mile per hour. Um, Public Water District Number 9, um, they're able to supply additional wa, uh, water for the additional lot. Um, preliminary and the final approvals were given by the Clay County Health, um, Center, and the Smithville Area Fire Protection Services property, so any future structures will need to comply with their codes and regulations. There's also, um, 100-foot northwest electric easement that goes through the property, and this has been included on the plat, and there's a note detailing what can be done and not done within that easement. Uh, there's a pond located on Lot 1A, and that does need to be inspected, um, and to, uh, to ensure that the stability of the pond is good, and any issues would need to be corrected before the, uh, recording of the final plat. Um, we did, we have a property owner, um, that is located across at 6218 Northeast 140th, Mr. Mark Auger. He called regarding the replating of the property related to his property and the location of the proposed Lot 2 driveway, and of course, the surfacing of Northeast 140th, and, um, he was referred to the Highway Department in ALIT survey. Um, the southern tract, as I had spoke before, is going to be considered, um, space for the two children, uh, for the property owners for their proposed plat, and it'd be walking, riding, picnic areas, um, different things for the two children that they can do together. Um, and HOA document is going to be, uh, will be, is required and will need to be recorded with, um, and make its issues, uh, on this tract. Um, and of course, as I said before, no residential, um, structures would be allowed on that track. Um, it's the recommendation of staff that the request for rezoning, uh, requests be approved, um, from agricultural to residential R1 with the agricultural land preservation. And staff also recommends that the final plat be approved with the three conditions as shown in Exhibit A. And if commissioners have questions, I'll try to answer those for you.
And Chairman, do you mind if I just add something to that?
No, no. Please do, Kip.
So I want to address this area back here that Debbie's talked about a couple times. So this is, this, this isn't the first time we've done this. Uh, we had a plat called Kakera Corners, which was up off 188th and Cameron Road, and we did something similar. Now, you know, I'm going to be straightforward. This, the, part of the reason for this is if we don't include this, these lots don't meet the width-to-depth ratio. But we've done this in the past where we've had an open space. We're considering it like an open space if you have a subdivision with interior streets, uh, where it will be required to have HOA covenants as to who maintains it, who can use it. The thought would be, this is actually, I know it looks tiny on here, but it's an acre and a half, or, or maybe even a little bit bigger. Uh, it's big enough to have a farm building, a, like a loafing shed, a, a place, a place to put, have a horse stay. Uh, it's a big enough area to use like that. So we thought this was a unique way to be able to plat this property, have it meet the code, um, and have a shared tract that both property owners, I think Debbie mentions, uh, the applicant's sons, because I think the plan is for one son to build here and one son to build here, but it would go with any future property owners that they would have access to this acre and a half in the back, and the covenants would control what they could do. So I just wanted to add that as well.
All right. Is, uh, thank you, Kip. Any of the board members have any questions for staff?
Was that a shared driveway, you said?
No.
Shared driveway? Where's the driveway on that Lot 1A?
This lot?
Yeah.
The, and correct me if I'm wrong, Terry, but I think they issued the driveway permit right on this corner.
That's correct.
So this, and I should, we should have added, this came before the commission not too long ago, so it probably looks familiar. There was a shared ingress egress easement that was vacated right here for.
No, actually, it was to the east more on the.
Is it? Okay, so was it in this area?
It was over more.
Okay. Well, there was a shared easement that was supposed to serve as access. I think it was on, on this property line.
That's correct, Kip.
So it was vacated, uh, and Highway Department has indicated that each of these lots can get a driveway, or has enough sight distance for each of them to have a driveway.
So who would, will the HOA will have the deed to the 1 and 1/2-acre share property? They'll pay taxes? The, the HOA will have the deed and pay taxes?
Yeah, so we'll just treat this like a, a normal HOA, whether it has 300 houses. This one just has two, where they have covenants just like that. They won't be as detailed, um, but it'll be shared between the two property owners.
Okay. Any other, does the board have any other questions for staff?
I mean, there's, Debbie mentioned something about a walking trail, but I mean, there's no other access for any other neighbors or boarding neighbors. Is that correct, Debbie? It's just for these two lots alone? That's it?
That is correct.
Hope they get along.
All right. Any other questions from the board? Would the applicant step up to the podium, state your name and address, please?
And we're, we're, we want the applicant at this point, Mr. Doss or Mrs. Doss, or?
Yeah, there you go.
All right. Can we start over, please, Mr. Doss?
Gary Doss, uh, 6200 Northeast 142nd Street, Smithville, Missouri.
All right. And you understand the staff's report?
Yes, sir.
And you're good? And you're good with the conditions that there, minor conditions that need be?
Yes, sir.
Completed very well? Does the board have any questions for the applicant? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to comment on the case being heard?
Yes, sir. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the commission. My name is Benjamin Auger. I live at 103 West Heritage Drive, actually down in Raymore, Missouri. And I speak on behalf of my father, Mark Auger, who is a resident across the street, the 6614 Northeast 140th Street. We do have some concerns with how this plot is drawn up. We have surveys that are older and show that we actually own the property along the road across the street, basically denying them road access. We are reasonable people, though, and we do want to see people leaving their dreams and building houses and everything. And we'd be willing to sell that property to the previous owner for a reasonable price. But as of right now, we request that we postpone this approval to give us time to get it surveyed so we can prove our right, our claim.
Could I make a comment on that? Kip, could you bring up the survey that was done by ALIT?
And Chairman, are you okay, are you okay with that? I just wanted to make sure Mr. Auger was finished before we.
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at a survey here that's done by a registered surveyor. It's not stamped, it doesn't have his seal on it, which I think is not an issue at the moment, but we're looking at a registered survey. I'm trying to get my bearings straight.
And what is the, what's your, do you have a survey that you, an older survey you said you had?
We do.
Have you presented that to Kip, my chance?
I called Kip last week, discussed with him, but, and he viewed it right before the meeting, but not in great detail.
So have you lived there prior to this road being built?
Uh, no, the road was already built at the time. The survey's from 1984, the original.
So, and I think Debbie can add a little more detail to this, but it's my understanding, so we have a plat, so the plat from Johnson Estates when it was initially recorded and shows the right-of-way dedicated and the right-of-way touching, my understanding is the right-of-way touches the, the existing road, so there is access. Highway Department has always indicated there is access to this, this, we, I don't have the details in front of me, but this, this has been brought up several times in different public meetings, because this, this lot has been subdivided a few times. And I, my understanding is that the right-of-way does touch the gravel road and we haven't been presented with any information that shows otherwise. Now, I think Debbie wanted to talk about this plat here, is that correct, Debbie?
That was done, yes, by the same surveyors.
And I think we have a representative of ALIT surveying here tonight that may be able to shed some light on this as well.
Did you blow up the screen to, to show the southern portion of Track 3? Like, that's the partial question?
So I think, I think this is the area, if I'm not mistaken?
It's about halfway down. You see, there's a dark line that kind of goes across the road. It starts on one side on the, on the west there and it ends up on the other side on the east. Our survey shows that we own the property all the way to that line. It's a little bit more clear when you go into the GIS for the county.
GIS is not.
The dark line is the section line is the center of the road.
So my question would, would be if we, the owner of this property probably has a title commitment, how I see on the property and, I mean, this, we have seen this property before, I remember, but have we had any issues with title commitments in the sales, previous couple of sales when he bought it?
I don't think there was any concern, because they weren't building anything on it at the time.
I would have been concerned if he.
And they already had, they already had an easement at the, at the corner.
The lines don't run straight down the road.
And if we're going to make comments, we need to make comments from the podium so we can get, get them for the minutes.
Is there a member from ALIT survey present?
Hello, Ward, I am Zachary.
Come in. Mr. Auger, we might ask you to take a seat for a minute, please, and.
Good evening, good evening, Ward. I am Zachary Brinker with ALIT Survey Company, 1000, or 2001 Northwest 72nd Street. We did complete the survey for Johnson Acres in 2004. There is road right-of-way there by prescription, which meaning that county funds have produced and have been used to maintain access to the Doss property and the Johnson Ridge property. So with that being said, through the laws of prescriptive rights, the Dosses have every right to have access to the property for their plat. The, the Augers have had ample time to discuss this and adversely claim to this line. There is a foot and a half strip, per my plat description, whenever we located the road from 2004, that is on the other side of the section line. But with prescriptive rights through the center line of the road, the county has basically maintained this and their Augers have no right to it since county money has been paid to maintain the roadway. Does that answer the questions, commissioners?
Yeah, might be a little above my pay.
I think so, yes. I think, what was your name again, please?
Zachary Brinker.
Zach, I guess with, there would be stamped, survey drawings delivered to P and Z if this is all approved and.
Yes, yes, there will be. This plat of description was made at their request of Mr. Doss. We have pulled through public records the Mr. Auger's deed to show his, where his property rights are, lines are. And if you go back to the plat of description, Kip? No, the plat of description, the one that's not stamped.
You want the, the current plat?
No, the plat of description, the one that Mr. Decker said that is not signed, that one, yeah, you're just there.
This one?
No, the, the other one.
No.
One of these plats actually.
That one right there.
Yes, that one.
Does that match the deed of trust on that property?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
So as you can see on Track 3, the, whoever wrote the description followed the edge of the roadway. So if we, I, if I pull the other deed that I believe to the owner to the west, there is going to be a no man's or a open strip of ground that is going to be a gap in the Because the deed does not follow that corner there above Johnson Estates on Lot 1, at the, where it turns back to the northwest, at the radius, at the radius on the, to the left, See where it says 140-foot radius at the nor, at the far west side of the lot?
So is it the gravel roadway that's running out of skew?
Yes, sir.
The right-of-ways, the forty-foot right-of-way lines are paralleling the center, the section line, which in theory should be the center of the road.
Yes. But it's the road that's running out of skew. Yeah, all of the, all of the public roadway is all on Mr. Auger's property.
All of the public right-of-way?
Yes, from this line here to this line here, the Johnsons dedicated all this additional roadway right here, whenever they plotted their property in 2004 for public use. The hatched area is the existing gravel drive roadway, correct, as it is currently positioned in the road today. All of the gravel roadway is all on Mr. Auger's property, except a one-foot strip, a one-to-two foot strip. Uh-oh, Debbie, your battery's died. There you go, right in this area right here. And then the property gets back on, on the other side of the section line inside the deeded public roadway. This right here is all in the, in plotted roadway, right here.
So it's, it's following on the, the highway department's property, not on?
It is, it is, yes, just, just this little bit is in dedicated road right-of-way, right here. All the other, everything else above this line, to the north of this line, is all on Mr. Auger's property without any road, roadway dedicated, which there are many roads in, in Clay County that have roads on them that are not deeded to the roadway or to the, for public use, but they are thereby prescriptive rights. So the best thing to do to ease everybody's pain, and so this does not come up again, is to have Mr. Auger have deed, have some, when his survey is done, deed the county the roadway and have it accepted and have his, have his lots plotted and have the county accept the roadway. And this would end this fight from, from here on out.
So right now, there's no forty-foot right-of-way on the north side of the section line?
There is not, there is no roadway.
On Mr. Auger's property?
No, there is not, no, no deeded roadway north of the section line. And I, unless the county wants to pay to move this roadway, the existing roadbed, and that's going to be a lot of money, because there's a big giant hill right here and move all, regrade all this road to get everything onto, and roadway that the county has deeded, has right-of-way to, that's the only way to resolve this issue, is to have Mr. Auger have the surveyor deed public, deed his roadway here.
So to answer the question, I, it's, that I need to be clear on here, none of this is affecting the current property that we're splitting in two right now.
No, the roadway.
So this has nothing to pertain to us, this would be Mr. Auger and the county roadway, not what we're hearing tonight.
Correct, and the only thing that Mr. Auger is, is stating is that this road, this part of the, where the gravel does not touch this line at right here, the section line, the section line right here, is what, where the property, where Mr. Auger's property line is, right?
But that's dedicated road easement by the Johnsons.
Yeah, and then.
On the other side.
Yeah, this, this forty-foot strip is dedicated roadway, right-of-way to the county for county use, that is not getting taxed by, the Dosses aren't paying any taxes on this forty-foot strip right here. So the only issue is this little piece of ground right in here. Because then on Tracks.
And again.
Yeah, and then Track 2, there, the road, his property description follows along the edge of the gravel road and comes up and around this corner right here. So this, this little strip right here, north of the section line, is, there is a gap in the, in the deed right here that nobody owns. There's no deeded, there's no deed for the, for this tract right here. And that's per this description in Book 627 and Page 142, as in the Recorder Deeds Office downstairs.
Mr. Auger, how many, or how long have you lived there? When did you purchase the property or was it given to you? What's the date? I'm trying to figure this, like, get a timeline here.
I've got it here for, see, this deed was.
Could you state your name and address for me, please, sir?
Oh, Mark Auger, 6614 Northeast 140th Street, Smithville, Missouri.
Thank you, sir.
This deed was in 84, when I originally bought the 12 acres. I, I don't think he realizes there's two, two complete deeds on this road. One of them is wrong, one of them is right. I do have another survey from the original farmer that counterdicts that the guy gave us a bad survey when I bought the property. And it goes around, goes down the section line and none of his farm had any round corners. So there's another straight line that goes down there. I have a survey, if you'd like to look at that.
Well, not if you say it's bad.
Huh?
Not if you say it's bad, I mean, you know.
No, I mean of, of the second survey. This has been surveyed more than, see, nobody knows about this other survey and it's from the original farm and it's a survey on the whole 222-acre farm. So, and it was at, I think, 89, which was later than these two surveys. So what I'm saying is that survey is wrong, the corner is actually mine, because I did purchase the corner of that farm. And the farm, by this survey, shows different lines. Shows a quarter section line all the way down and then, and includes the corner and goes the other direction.
But I'm saying if, if the legal description was correct on that plat, then that survey should be correct. So that's why I was asking earlier, on that legal description on your property, if that's correct, then I, I don't see how you can argue that it's.
Well, there's another way to settle this. Land has value. If you give us a reasonable value, we could just survey it off for you. That will make everything look pretty on paper, correct?
I think it's been established as a county road long enough, I think you'd have a tough legal battle.
Well, I've asked the county that, too. I was out there with the original county guy doing this ground split. And we walked down there with the surveys and he says, "This is not going to go, this is not going to go. His land does not touch the road." And my property does not have a road easement. The forty-eight, forty-foot you're talking about should go from his line on him, not through his line to the middle of the road. I'd say it'd be easy, a few dollars, land's worth of money.
I think we got it. I don't know, I think you have to refer to Andy on this.
Does any, any other board member have a question for Mr. Auger?
At this point.
All right, thank, thank you for now, Mr. Auger.
Okay, guys have a good day.
I think, I don't, if, based on the, the case being heard with the registered, ultimately sealed survey, I, I don't know if there's a proper law dispute between the joining property owner and it's the surveyors to work it out, or title insurers to work it out. I don't know if it's really going to impact what we're here tonight to do for the Dosses. Andy, do you have any words of wisdom to share on this, or?
I think the question to consider is, does your decision, is your decision tonight impacted by whichever position is correct? Because we've got two people asserting different positions. If the question before you and the application before you is unrelated to that particular issue, then I think you can move forward. If there's a, if that question has to be answered because it impacts the application, then it might be prudent to set this over a month to get more information. But again, if the answer to that is not going to impact this application, and I don't know if Kip can.
I think we're sitting in with, inside the forty-foot of the center line of the current established road, it doesn't impact, and that's the question that we're, I think, it's. what you're asking, Andy? And, and, so do we have that answered, Kip?
I'm not sure I understand. What, what, what are you asking, Chris?
Is the, is the dispute, you know, property line impact this application, or is it completely separate consideration?
So, I would consider that this, this property's been platted before and divided, and it wasn't an issue at that point. My understanding from what ALIT has stated to us is that it's not an issue. Highway Department, I don't believe, thinks it's an issue. Um, and Debbie, I don't know if you have, you, you've been in the office longer than I have, I don't know if you have any comments either on that?
Um, no, I agree with you, Kip. It, it's already been platted. The right-of-way was dedicated with the original plat, so we're not talking about any new dedication of right-of-way.
So if it, if it was an issue, it, yeah, like Debbie said, we're not, we're not asking for more right-of-way with this one. So the right-of-way is not extending. So by, to me, by approving the plat today, that's not changing anything or, or doing anything as far as the right-of-way goes. That was done when the, this property was first platted, if that makes sense?
It does. I guess the only, if, if the, if the north property line ultimately moves, if it impacts the, uh, width-to-depth ratio where they've created this, uh, one-hundred-foot north and south, one-point-four acre tract to meet the width-to-depth ratio, but...
So I don't think, even if, if there was determined to be a strip of Mr. Auger's south of the road, I would think, I mean, the solution there would be that needs to be right-of-way anyway. So I don't think this property line would, would extend to the north even if that occurred. So I don't think there's a concern with that unless I'm looking at it wrong.
I mean, the information being provided to us is, is sealed by a registered surveyor, and, uh, the applicant's meeting all the, the county regulations or requirements, uh, I, I don't know if we should let the, the property line dispute, uh, ho, hold us up.
Just to clarify, that north property line of the applicant's isn't impacted by this dispute, is it? Because of that right-of-way?
No, in my opinion, it would not be affected by that.
So that's what I'm saying, is if this applicant's northern line is set and it's been platted, right? We're not extending it. And so it's basically, is that portion of land, is it already a right-of-way or is it part of their land? Doesn't impact that northern line and it doesn't necessarily impact then your consideration of this application.
Right.
All right. Is that clear? I clears it up? I'm here. Is there any, anyone else in the audience who would like to comment on the case being heard?
I would like to ask one more question.
Could you state your name and address, please?
Mark Auger, sixty-six, sixteen northeast one hundred and forty street. Uh, now I lost it. Or it'd be an old, uh... I, I'm trying to get this through my head, that I've asked the people several times in this room, what has changed from the time it was originally platted, I mean, cut off and sectioned, and where they had to put the easement on this, what, on the other side of the road for access? And, and now that, all of a sudden, it's legal. It was kind of landlocked there at first, and now it's, now it's okay. What's, what's, what, what law has changed? What rule has changed from the time it was split to now when you say, "Now, oh, he's got all the access he wants"? Before, he does not have access. And the proof's of the pudding is they put an easement on this property to the road because that was his only access. Again, what has changed?
And Chairman, I can address that a little bit. It may not be the best answer, but...
If you would, please.
So, we vacated this ingress-egress easement. Uh, we rely on the Highway Department to tell us if this needs to be there. They stated it did not. They're stating that this lot that we're proposing here has a location for a driveway and that this lot has a location for the driveway. So we're relying on the, the Clay County Highway Department. Now, I can't, I wasn't part of the original meetings as to why this was placed there. I suppose if the commission wants, I can review those meeting minutes and see if there's discussion about that and the reason that was placed. I did not do that before this meeting, but I could do that. So I don't know why that was, decided that was needed at that point. But it's been decided, or we've been given the approval for each of these lots to have access.
But you didn't have them at that time. I mean, see, that's, that's, why, to me, they would have never put this access to the driveway on there if he had legal access to the road at the time that property was split. They put that on there because then that was, should be his access to that twenty acres. It's never been split in half before, so that was his access to the twenty acres off the end of that lot. And what has changed? I haven't, have nobody in this room tell me what law has changed or anything?
I have a question for you, and, and I don't know the answer to this, and maybe you can fill me in. So if that were the case, there would be a separate tax bill for that piece right there. Have you paid taxes on that?
I've paid every tax bill they sent me.
Is that piece on your tax bill?
Uh...
Because it's a separate piece from your other tax bill, so would it be...
Well, I, you know, I don't know what's on my tax bill. They send me a bill, I pay it.
Yeah.
You know? Do you know what's on your tax bill?
Absolutely.
Well, I just pay my bills. But what I'm saying, originally, the same council, maybe different people, but that's what I agreed to, they agreed to. So now you're break, breaking your agreement. And I'm just asking, what is different? Yes, the Highway Department says, "Yeah, you can go somewhere else", but that, this was a whole different time. And this is what, basically, this is an agreement I went into with the county. That's how this was settled when that split happened. Now, the county and the owner, different owner, the third, second owner, has now said, "No, he didn't agree with that". I'm saying, why is the county breaking their agreement with me? You've got to have some kind of reasoning other than, because the original Highway Department man said it wasn't liable. Just because this Highway Department says is right, the original guy said, "This is what we agreed to".
All right. Very well. We, we appreciate it, Mr. Auger. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to comment on the case being heard? No other discussion from the audience or the board? I would call for a motion to approve the rezoning and final plat of Johnson Estates, replat lot one, with the attachments set forth, uh, in exhibit A.
And just to be clear, Chairman, uh, would prefer two votes, rezoning first and then the final plat with the conditions second?
My bad. My bad. I'll rephrase my request for approval of rezoning of Johnson Estates, replat lot one. Do you have a motion for rezoning approval?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Very well.
I'll second.
Very well. Roll call vote?
Chris Higgins.
Approved.
Marvin Davis.
Approved.
Terry Griffin.
Approved.
David Rotis.
Approved.
Brad Scarlett.
Approved.
And Chairman Tom Becker.
Approved.
Motion carries.
Next, I'd call for a motion to approve the final plat of Johnson Estates, replat of lot one, with the, uh, attachments of exhibit A, uh, part of the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with conditions.
Very well. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Very well. Do you have a roll call vote?
Chris Higgins.
Approved with conditions.
Marvin Davis.
Approved with conditions.
Terry Griffin.
Approved with conditions.
David Rotis.
Approved with conditions.
Brad Scarlett.
Approved with conditions.
Chairman Tom Becker.
Approved with conditions.
The next case we'll hear this evening is case number April two-one-dash-one-one-five CUP. And, uh, would you have a staff report, please?
Yes, Chairman, we'd like to have the staff report as part of the official record.
So be it.
So this is a request for a renewal of a conditional use permit for an exotic, dangerous, wild animal facility located at seventy-eight fifteen Hauser Street. It's approximately three-point-zero-three acres. Uh, this case was originally heard in two thousand and fifteen. And so it, it's a facility that does education and outreach, uh, has different animals, has some animals that are considered exotic, some that are domestic. Um, originally, two thousand and fifteen, this was heard at the Planning and Zoning Commission, I believe, twice. Uh, the second meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted three to two to approve with fifteen conditions on the application. At that point, it went to County Commission. Uh, the County Commission voted after several meetings, uh, three to zero to approve with fifteen conditions. They, they changed a couple of the conditions. A couple of the conditions had to do with limiting the number of exotic animals and then also limiting the type of exotic animals. Uh, the County Commission put a condition on there that, uh, did not allow the applicant to have, uh, certain types of cat, exotic cats. And so the applicant chose to appeal that decision to the circuit court. Uh, to make a long story short, ended up in court for years. Uh, the court basically came back and said, "The county can submit findings of fact", or the five-year period that this conditional use permit was granted for was up at that point, and we could just start over the process, and the applicant could apply for the renewal of a conditional use permit. So that's why we're here tonight. So technically, it was, the CUP was approved, uh, with the fifteen conditions. Um, I've got the property pulled up. You can see it outlined in the yellow. It is at the end of a cul-de-sac. It's part of Cary Hills North, a subdivision, um, that's within a mile of the city of Kansas City. I'll zoom out a little bit just so you get, uh, a little bit of idea of the, the layout of that area. Uh, this area does have several different subdivisions. There's Cary Hills, Cary Hills North, Ballybrook to the south. Uh, a lot of this area right in here are roughly three-acre parcels that are part of interior-streated subdivisions. You can see the city limits of Kansas City right there. We did reach out to Kansas City. They did not supply any comments for this case. And then you see there are some larger acreages, uh, especially to the west as well. And that is, uh, Northeastern Road. Uh, so basically, one-hundred-and-thirty-second to the north and Northeastern to the west, uh, located within the Cary Hills North subdivision. So there's a lot in this staff report, and by no means am I going to read word for word because this staff report's fifty-plus pages. So the, the items that I do want to go over are the sections of code that deal with any conditional use permit. So we have a, at the very beginning of chapter six, uh, section one-five-one-dash-six-point-one is our use table, and that use table tells us what uses are allowed in each zoning district. This lot is zoned, uh, let me zoom in, but it's zoned R-one, which is a residential zoning. Uh, and the use table in chapter six does allow for the application of a conditional use permit for exotic, dangerous, wild animals for R-one zoning, ag zoning, and C-three zoning. So this does have the correct zoning to be able to get a conditional use permit. Uh, it's located in the urban services tier because it is within a mile of Kansas City. For this type of case, we have to send certified letters to neighbors. We post a sign on the property, and we put this case in the Courier Tribune. Uh, there are additional sections of the land development code as well, in, in addition to six-point-one. There's a section under conditional use permits, which you can see on page five of your staff report, and there are specific criteria which should be considered and met with conditional use permit applications. So you can see there's six of those criteria that start on page five and end up on page six. And then there is also a complete section for exotic, dangerous, wild animals. And I'm going to try to pull up the staff report. So here are the, here's the section on the conditional use permit with the six, uh, criteria. And then this section of code has to do with just EDW, exotic, dangerous, wild animals. And it provides a list. Now, at the very start, it says this list is not an all-inclusive list, but is basically outlining the types of animals that should be considered exotic, dangerous, wild. And there's a definition that I think is one of the last things in the findings section of the staff report, and I'll give you a page number. We included the definition of exotic, dangerous, wild animals on page twelve, right before recommendations, is basically any animal that is not normally domesticated in the United States. So this list is not all-encompassing, but it gives us a guide of what should be considered exotic, dangerous, wild. As far as outside agency review goes, Highway Department stated they have no comments. Same with the, the Health Department. The applicant is not proposing to move property lines, add structures, or change anything with the existing septic system, so we did not need comments there. Uh, the Water District states that they can supply water to the proposed lot and do supply water to the proposed lot. Staff reached out to the USDA because the applicant does have a USDA license, uh, which was included in the staff report. And we talked to Angela Depauw, who's a USDA Animal Care Inspector. She is familiar with the applicant and her facility, and she stated that she is in good standing with the USDA, and the subject did pass their last inspection, which was on twelve thirty-one of two thousand and twenty. And we also attached that inspection as part of, uh, an exhibit, uh, to the staff report. There's some additional information there, but, uh, basically said she passed her inspection and that the USDA does have some fencing requirements, and we'll talk about fence here in a minute. The applicant submitted a business plan and an animal table showing the total number of animals. Using that animal, animal table, uh, it shows that there are sixty-five animals currently on site. Staff considers eighteen of these animals to be domestic and forty-seven to be exotic, dangerous, wild. The domestic animals include dog, cat, chinchilla, rabbit, chicken, and goat. And then here's the list of exotic, dangerous, wild animals. It can be anything from a lynx. Uh, these are mainly cats. Uh, the cats are small, some of them are as small as house cats. Other of the cats, I, it's my understanding, are as big as forty pounds. Uh, and then there's some smaller things like hedgehogs, armadillos, porcupines, and some of these, I'll be honest, I Googled them all, but I don't know what all those little things are. Lot of them are little cute, little animals.
Yes.
Um, so, uh, so there's a wide variety. We also included some pictures of the bigger cats to give the commission an idea of what kind of cats we're talking about. Like this one, there's totally, there, there's currently twelve. They weigh between twenty and forty pounds. It's an African cat. These are a little bit smaller, quite a bit smaller, four to eleven pounds. And then the lynx, I think most people know what a lynx is, between eleven and forty pounds is currently four of those. And then this one basically looks like a house cat. So we included some of that information. The applicant has stated that she has locked gates and security cameras that are monitored by a, a third-party company. Uh, the cameras are also used to watch the animals to make sure they're healthy. Uh, and the field, facility is surrounded by a six-foot-tall fence, uh, with an interior perimeter fence that has sections that are between six and eight feet in height. Uh, the original staff report from five years ago... The original staff report from five years ago had a requirement that she upgrade her fence all to eight feet. I don't think it's, I am by no means an expert on type of cats. I would prefer relying on USDA. If they say the fence height is okay, then I think staff is okay with that. So we took that condition out. We received letters of support and letters of opposition, which were included in the staff report. I wanted to include the purpose and intent of the Land Development Code, which is to promote the public health, safety, and general welfare of the residents and visitors to Clay County. We'll talk about that a little bit more here in a minute. So the current code allows, as I stated earlier, a conditional use permit for these types of facilities in ag, R1, and C3 zoning district. The C3 zoning district is a more intense commercial zoning district. The ag, our current standard for ag zoning is 20-plus acres. Our current lot size for R1 zoning is 10-plus acres. As I stated earlier, Ms. Kasterman's lot is just a hair over three. Now, when it was platted, I think it was maybe 1985, when it was platted and zoned, it met the standards at that time. So this is basically just a, for lack of a better term, a grandfathered-in lot that can keep the R1 zoning district until she would go and move property lines or try to subdivide or add property to her existing lot. So it meets current standards. It's just a smaller R1-zoned lot at this point. Staff, you know, believes the intent of the use table to only allow the EDW facility in the ag, R1, and C3 zonings, we believe it's because the ag is 20-plus acres, the R1 is 10-plus acres, and the C3 is an intense use. So we believe that's the reason that it's only allowed in those three zonings. The minimum lot size for the R1 zoning changed with the 2000 edition of the Land Development Code. It went from three to 10 acres at that point. So according to the applicant, she purchased the property in 2010. At that point, she owned three servals, which are one of the cats, but did not operate the business or obtain the USDA license until 2014. So in 2014, our current code was in effect at that point. Staff became aware of this in 2015. I was the one that did the initial inspection, because I was building inspector at the time. So we inspected the property and then realized that there were cats or exotic animals on the property at that point, and that's what initiated the initial conditional use permit. So before the applicant applied for a, the renewal of the conditional use permit, she requested a written interpretation from Planning and Zoning staff as to whether she met one of the exemptions. There are exemptions in the EDW code that basically say you don't need a conditional use permit if you are accredited by the American Zoo and Aquarium Association, or if you are a scientific and/or educational institute or research laboratory. I reviewed that application and reviewed the code, and my determination was that the applicant did not meet these exemptions. We included that written interpretation as attachment J to the staff report. We talked about the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting from earlier. Staff is recommending denial. And the reason for that recommendation is, we talked about the purpose and intent of the Land Development Code. We believe that it doesn't meet that purpose and intent. We talked about the criteria with any conditional use permit, and we don't believe it meets specifically A, B, and F of those criteria. And we believe the intent, as I discussed earlier, was to, of the Land Development Code, was to put facilities like this on larger acreage, because we have, we have concern about public safety, general welfare, because there's a house here, a house here, both of them within a couple hundred feet of the location. Now, we have not had any complaints on the subject parcel. We had a complaint, we have not had any substantiated complaints. We had a complaint in either 2015, early 2016, that a cat got out, but that was never substantiated. I believe that was not accurate. So we have not had complaints on this, or substantiated complaints on this use, since it was initially approved for that conditional use permit. So staff is recommending denial. However, if the commission votes to approve, staff has included several conditions. We've actually bumped up, if you approve it, we would like to give the applicant 10 years, because either she needs to be given time to operate this. Initially, this was two years, when this was presented to you before, and the County Commission changed this to five years. We removed the condition about the fencing. I did add a condition about junk and debris on the property, basically just because, if you zoom in here, you can see a bunch of stuff. We took some pictures, and I think there's some pictures actually included in the staff report later on, and I'll show you those to you here in a second, that show there might be some clutter along the garage area. But we added a condition about that, notifying the Sheriff's Department that there is a facility there. And I believe those were the changes to the, to the staff report. Now, we did receive two, two items after the report was sent. We received an additional letter of opposition, which Debbie's going to hand out, and we're going to include that as Exhibit B. And then we received, we reviewed the minutes from the initial planning and zoning meeting, and there was quite a bit of talk about insurance coverage that the applicant had. So we're going to include the insurance that was provided by the applicant as Exhibit C. And I guess the last thing that I've mentioned is that there's, all those additional items that we added to the staff report, including the business plan, the letters of support, the opposition letters. One of the opposition letters came with pictures of the property. The USDA license and inspection is included. And then we also included the court case, the Circuit Court case, as well. And I know that's a lot of information really quick. And I know the applicant is here. I would be happy to answer any questions commissioners may have, and I know the applicant would like a chance to speak as well.
And Debbie, do we have enough to give to the applicant?
Kip, would you have a copy of the 15 items? And the additional, the attachment for the initial approval of the CUP that you put on the?
Yes, I have a copy of the resolution that was approved in 2015 with the conditions. Would you like me to read those?
Yeah, if you make it quick.
So Condition 1 is the applicant shall comply with all the conditions and requirements of the Land Development Code, Section 151-3.10, conditional use permits, and Section 151-6.2E, animals exotic, dangerous, wild, or as amended. Number 2 is the conditional use permit shall be based on a timeframe of five years. Number 3 is the conditional use permit may be revoked at any time based on validated public complaints for violations to the Land Development Code substantiated by staff. Number 4 is proper notification and registration with the Clay County Sheriff's Office of the EDW animal facility. Number 5, and this is the one we removed, eight-foot perimeter fence at least three feet from any enclosure must be extended around the entirety of the EDW animal facility. Number 6, an emergency plan must be submitted and approved by staff. I believe we removed that condition as well. Number 7, screening must be required to provide for uninterrupted obstruction of view along Hauser Street and adjacent properties, so as to block the view of the EDW animal facility. Screening must be in the form of natural vegetation that adequately shields the view from Hauser Street and adjacent properties. Number 8, the applicant shall comply with and meet all codes and regulations stipulated by any local, state, and federal governmental entities having jurisdiction over animal care and/or EDW animal facilities, or as amended. Number 9, lighting shall be directed downward and shielded from direct glare or nearby properties and roadways. Number 10, display sign must be placed upon the premises stating that there are EDW animals on the property. The sign shall be visible and capable of being read from the public street that abuts the property. Number 11, once approved, the CUP is non-transferable. Therefore, if ownership changes, a new CUP must be filed with the Clay County Planning and Zoning Office. Number 12, the total number, or the total maximum number of adult EDW animals at any one time is limited to 30, and for public safety purposes, shall further be exclusively limited to the following species: Jeffrey's cat, ringtail cat, swift fox, finnick fox, burvet monkey, genet, hedgehog, chinchilla, armadillo, wallaby, prairie dog, red and yellow-footed tortoises, leopard tortoise, Argentine tagu, I'm not going to pronounce the next one, and porcupine. And if I may add, so that, the Planning and Zoning Commission put the number on as a condition, and then the County Commission took it further and added the list of animals, which excluded several of the species of cats. And it goes on further to say, still with Condition 12, is the four-aged serval cats currently possessed by the applicant are permitted under the CUP until such time as these four serval cats die and are removed permanently from the premises. Thereafter, serval cats are not permitted under this conditional use permit. Number 13, young EDW animals shall not be included in the total maximum allowed up to six months in age. 14, each bearing female, EDW may have up to one litter of young per calendar year. And 15, a certificate of liability insurance must be provided to the, to staff on an annual basis, which provides insurance coverage with regard to each of the permitted EDW animals listed herein above. Those are the 15 conditions.
Do you have, the board members have questions for staff regarding the CUP for the EDW?
So, yeah, what's the current total number of animals, and how many were not supposed to be on this list?
So currently, there's 65 animals on site, according to the table provided by the applicant, and 18 are domestic, 47 are EDW, for staff determination. And I'd have to look into detail, but I think the ones that were not allowed by the resolution that was passed by the commission, now keep in mind, we, we did not include that condition in the staff report to you today, but the, the animals that were not allowed were the serval, the lynx, the larger cats, basically. But again, that's not a condition on today's report.
So I think, if I was correct, Item 12, when the original CUP was six months in age or less, does not count as an adult, and it was 30 adult animals?
Item 12, yes. But number of adult EDW animals is limited to 30. And the next condition said, young EDW animals shall not be included in the maximum allowed if they're six months in age or less.
Does the board have any other questions for staff?
Is this a business-for-profit, or, I mean, why, why do you have all the cats? I mean, are you selling these? I mean, what's the whole premise of?
We could certainly invite Mrs. Kasterman up to the podium.
Is there a business license?
Pardon me?
Is there a business license from the county?
Would the applicant like to step forward, please? We'd like the applicant to step forward and state her name and address.
Good evening. My name is Edward Ford. I'm an attorney. My office is at 1201 Northwest Barcliff Parkway, second floor, Kansas City, Missouri. I have with me the applicant, Jennifer Kasterman, and I'll have her address that issue, but her USDA license does allow her to, to sell the animals. Just a few introductory remarks, and I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer. One, this is a renewal. The code, all the code requires is an R1 zoning. The code does not require certain acreage. If the intent of the code, which was 2011, which was after everything was grandfathered in, to require 10 or more acres, it could have said that in the section on exotic animals. We have a seven-year history here of no issues, no problems. We've had literally hundreds of showings of these animals at public schools, public libraries, boy scout camps, girl scout camps, et cetera. Probably not as many over the last year because of the pandemic. But these animals are exhibited in front of children all the time. We do take some issue with the description of some of the animals as exotic. I think there's at least three species that you can buy at Pet Mart that I don't think any of us would consider exotic. But still, the majority of the animals are exotic. And, and I think the most important point is, we have the support of the most immediate neighbors to this property. Property to the right, property to the left, the property behind, the property across the street. We have support from those neighbors, who are most arguably impacted by this. A lot of the objections come from neighbors who live blocks away. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jennifer, and ask her, because of the time, I'll ask her to be briefer than we had planned on, but to talk about what an asset this Casey Exotics are, a little bit about what she does, about the animals, a little bit about the USDA licensing. All I can say, highly regulated area. They come out, they inspect, they have their own requirements. They would certainly exceed anything Clay County would require us to do. And then I'll come back, and we'll see if you can answer any questions.
All right, thank you.
My name is Jennifer Kasterman. I live at 7815 Hauser Road, Kansas City, Missouri, 64167. I am the owner, and then also owner of Casey Exotics RS, Exotics RS. It's actually, my business license is under JK Animals LLC, and we do business under Exotics RS, which is also what my USDA licensing is under. So if you look at that, it's there. I don't have the business license as part of the staff report there, but if you guys want, I can definitely submit that to you, just to clear up that question. I am a licensed certified teacher in the state of Missouri. I've been teaching for, going on 14 years. Also, I've been doing animal husbandry now, education, for over 10 years. I bought the property in 2010 with the intent for, with the animals, I had three servals at the time, and to continue to work with education, I was working with my mentor at the time, which was Exotic Animals RS, and they were out of loan jack. That's why I didn't have a USDA license for the first couple of years I was there, because I wasn't actually exhibiting mine or myself as the lead. I was going along with them and working under him. USDA had actually been out to the facility, or my home, and seen the animals before. The Canadian lynx actually were brought there in 2011. In 2015, when staff came out because neighbors had concerns, weren't sure what was there, one of the big concerns was lions and tigers and bears. Being, I am USDA, but in 2012, with the LACI Act, that shows you can't have any large, large cats, something like that, animals unless you are either grandfathered in at that point, or have to be open to the public zoo zoning and all of that. So I will never have any of those animals. I will never have any big cats, large cats, bears either, based on that I can't have one of the property for them, or, in my opinion, the ability to take care of them the way that they would deserve, being that size. that they would deserve, being that size. As far as the animals, like we were talking about the list on it, Kip has done really well, I think, with going back through and like noticing that some of the animals before that were listed were, are actually domestic, that had been on my original numbers. Uh, the animals that Ed just referred to, as far as like right here where you see hedgehog, sugar gliders, and then you've got, um, the tortoises, euromastic, a euromastic lizard is the equivalent of a bearded dragon, a little bit smaller in most cases. So that's where I'm saying that those shouldn't be on there either, is I don't think you're going to make the kids that have a box turtle or something like that also have to have a CUP for it. The zoning, I'm, I'm an R1 where it should be, as far as that goes. As Ed said, there's nothing that states that it has to be three. If it is the recommendation, then that would be something that should be put in place in this report, where I asked for definition for if I was exempt. Uh, that has been a question before, where it states that you have to be AZA accredited there. AZA is the American Zoo Association, you're a member, it's an actual membership there. I am a member of them, but I am not open to the public, so I'm not a licensed facility for that. I have no intention of ever being open to the public. With that, for, I guess I missed at the beginning, what we do do is we bring, we take animals with us, it's kind of a bring the zoo to you. We take them to private events, we take them to schools, we take them to libraries, and we introduce about the animals so that you actually get firsthand knowledge, getting to see them, meet them, and learn about species that you normally would not get to, so to help with the preservation and conservation of those species. If you don't know, if you don't know a serval exists, then how would you know to do anything about it to be able to preserve it for the future so it doesn't become extinct? With COVID, yes, it's been one of the things, as far as this exhibiting, we did still, we still have done some different things in schools and all of that, but it is, you know, just following the rules, just like here, social distancing, we're not allowing any touch or anything like that with any of the animals, even the, like tortoises, just based on for their safety, you can't, hand sanitizer's not safe for them, so the safety of the animals is, and all, all of us around them, is our number one priority. We have been doing some virtual shows though, so that's one, we actually just aired one there, so like the library's had us come, and then we've been recording with them, and then they're airing them still at different times, so that the kids and everybody, and the adults, we do all ages, are still learning it. We go to retirement homes, situations like that. Here's, this picture, here's a good example of just some of our, the different species that we have. You asked about if, like, business licensing commerce, yes, we're not, non-for-profit. We work with a lot of non-for-profit agencies. We've got like the Special Olympics coming up, um, this weekend, actually. Uh, but honestly, the animals, it's up to them. We don't make them do anything they, they don't want to do. And I very strongly feel that, you know, it's not fair to just pass them off to somewhere else, you know? If I have one, I'm a forever home, and we'll take it on for that, you know, for the best of its needs. So if, you know, we've got a serval cat, or I've got a chinchilla that likes to go out in public and is fine and does well in those situations, it's a very controlled situation by us, that, that's fine, but if they don't want to go that day, say they're not feeling like it, kind of like we all have those days, we don't make them go. Somebody doesn't want to load up in a kennel, somebody doesn't want to get out, if there's a noise somewhere, and one of them, if you tell they're nervous or scared, we don't make them do it either, so that's something we also always disclose to wherever we're going, just so that they are aware of that. Um, did I miss anything that you guys were asking on that? I would like to address some of the, since we were just flick, flicking through the pictures there, um, the neighbors, I've got one letter from a neighbor that submitted some of the pictures there that say, one, I've spoken with this neighbor, and he doesn't believe that animals should be, you know, in cages, enclosures, or in captivity, so that's his opinion there. My opinion, when I'm asking about the house and what it is that way, that is a different opinion of his, it has nothing to do with the business. He does state that the window is boarded, and as you see, like right there in that picture, that's actually, I mean, I could tell you it's a curtain, but I'm going to tell you the truth, it's actually a blanket, and I've got pictures of it here, it's got a frog on it on the inside there. If you guys want to see these, I have a couple of copies or whatever, just, these are pictures that were taken just this morning, so it shows, updated there. That room, I've tiled the entire house, and that room's a little bit drafty right there, so I've got a blanket up in the window because it's a bedroom. Some of the different things that are out front, uh, I just sold mine, I just got new, washer, or not washer, I'm sorry, new kitchen appliances and all that stuff in there. So in this picture, as you see a few weeks ago, that blue tarp in the front is covering up the stove and the microwave, because I had them on Marketplace and hadn't sold them yet, and it was rainy, so, um, I've sold the refrigerator since then. There's nothing that was planned on being out there, and it wasn't anything that's been out there for months or anything like that. Some of the other stuff, furniture there that is, uh, we do have, there's also a question where it talks about, uh, what is the awning off to the side? Like the lattice there, it says that the arbor or whatever is falling apart. It's not falling apart. Um, yeah, my white fence could use some paint. I'll tell you honestly, I've, I really don't like sanding and scraping, and I have other projects that I would say that I have picked those first to do. But I do have these, if you guys would like to see these.
Do you have a, a sign that's visible from the road that identifies your business?
Um, I do not have a sign that identifies it, but that is not because I was being non-compliant, that was, we were not provided the sign, and with the pending court case was told, I don't know what things, I mean, that, you know, the sign would come when it came, so there is a sign this time for the CUP that's out right now for it, but even last time we did it, I think it was new for a CUP for exotics, that, because we didn't, the sign was never provided the first time either with it, so it is there now. And I have no problem with the signage, it's just, I want to.
I think that was an item of condition on the first CUP that was issued five years ago.
Right, and it wasn't issued to us. The sign wasn't issued.
So you're expecting the county to issue you a sign?
I thought that that was the, I thought that the sign came from the county.
So, Commissioner, if I may, so, since the, the case was in court, staff was instructed basically to let that course, court case play out, so we did not enforce any of the conditions while that court case was going on.
Is the court case still going on?
No, it's, it's done, that's why we're coming back with the renewal.
All right. So you missed, you mentioned another pending court case, is there another pending court case?
No, that was the, that was the, that was the, which was the appeal, yes.
So I have a, a, a quick question, as far as, when you got the first conditional use permit, there was limitations on numbers of animals, and I'm an animal lover, so don't get me wrong, I love animals, but, I mean, obviously, you've, you have a passion for these, I can see that, but you've exceeded your, your limit of animals you can have on your current conditional use permit. Did you not find that was going to be a problem for you down the road?
Well, there's a lot of discussion that went back and forth on the animals, is what they were. One of the things we talked about was the six months or younger. When it talks about the 30 animals, there's actually in some of the meetings where it talked about that that was outside, and that was just of the EDWs that were the foxes and the cats that Mr. Tap referred to at the time, and not counting the animals inside. The list that, um, and the number, whatever that Kip has provided with you for me, is based on all of them, inside or not, so that's the inside house cats, it's rabbits, it's hedgehog, you know?
Right, 80, 30 animals is 30 animals, doesn't matter if they're in, in or out, the way I read that, so.
But that is, that's, that's my reason behind, as far as why that, you know, exceeding that, and that was brought up in meetings at the time too, was that the 30 wasn't, um, it wasn't defined correctly at one versus the other, and then where it was that we were ending up with.
Yeah, so.
And per the code, um, I'm not exceeding the amount of animals based on size. Is that correct, Kip, for where it is for the, for acreage and how many animals with it is? I mean, none of them are the size of even cows.
I'm not worried about the code as much because of your, being approved the first time around, where, where I have an issue is the number of animals that you have past your current, current conditional use permit, you, you violated your conditional use permit. That's what I'm seeing.
All right, um, I'm going to, that was part of the appeal?
Yeah.
Which is also then that was said that the animals and the numbers and the kinds were not, so I'm not meaning to be.
I can get that you're an animal lover, I, I just, they set a parameter for you and you didn't stick with it, so your reason for that was?
That I, the parameter wasn't there and I didn't agree with it. Kind of like I didn't agree with the amount of, that they allowed four servals, but they didn't allow the other eight of the servals to be there, um, and that's why we did the appeal.
What's the number you will agree with?
Depending on species.
Indoor, outdoor?
Indoor, I mean, because, I mean, technically, I could have like a hundred and something peacocks on the property, but it's not something that I preferably want to do. So, um, I don't feel the, I'm not looking to exceed 100 in any way, shape, or form or any kind like that, I don't want to have animals that I can't provide the care that they deserve. I also, one of the things, um, that, this last letter that was just presented tonight that talks about the, um, building exceeding the property or more, there haven't been any cages built, they like to extend past that original perimeter fence that was up five years ago when everybody was out. Um, the shade cloth is required by USDA for the health of the animals that's up there. Um, I do have breed in black. In the wintertime, I do pull the black shade cloth down to the sides to help it so that it's like a wind block instead of being, taking the sun away because of the heat and temperature.
Kip, you mind bringing up the map again, and then, Ms. Kasterman, do you mind kind of giving me an idea of where these animals are on this property, where they're being kept at night, during the day? How, how's it all work? I mean, that's.
Okay, can I clarify, David?
Do you have a pointer up there? Is this laser?
Okay, so, um, right here, obviously, is the house. Um, this is the pool right there, um, and then this, right here where you see is the interior perimeter fence and the outside there. Um, I have goats that have the outer perimeter there, they work well with the lawn. Um, my dogs, my two dogs have outer area of the perimeter there. Other than that, this area, this spot with the square right here, this is what we call Area 1, everything's marked off, assigned to each enclosure, is labeled and all of that also. Um, there are three servals that reside right there in it. Then, right in here underneath this pine tree there, this is, you've got Area 2, and then right behind this pine tree is Area 3, this spot, that little square, sorry, I can't keep it focused on it, but right there, that's where my swift foxes live, so there's four foxes that live in a large enclosure there, that can also section off for their safety and separation from each other. And then under the pine tree, this area right here, has where the other servals and where the lynx are. The lynx go along this side right there, um, and then there's four servals there and here, and then I've got a shed and, um, concrete pad building, there's a little fire pit and stuff like, right, kind of, right in there where the, below that tree. Um, over here, uh, my prairie dogs, when they are outside in the summertime, they're housed next to the pool underneath a little awning. Um, the jaffarays have, um, access to, I've got like a back deck that's on the back right there that's covered, it's got fencing, but it also has screen because I don't like mosquitoes when I'm out there. Um, you've got, uh, then other than that inside, I mean, I have servals that are inside, there's animals, some of them can come inside, some of them are outside. The tortoises, uh, they're outside in the wintertime, or, I mean, they're outside in the summertime, they really want to come outside right now. Um, but, uh, I have put them before in my front, like right at the front flower bed, but again, they're tortoises, they're not like this, and, um, you know, they're enjoying the weather that way, otherwise, they're in the back. The porcupines, um, enclosure is also right here, so, uh, just behind that pine tree. At the moment, the porcupine's inside due to some health issues of its own, but hopefully we'll be going back out that way. But each of the enclosures are, you know, exceed USDA limits for the space for the animals to live in, play, they are provided enrichment. Um, you know, we have fresh water that's out there, I've got heated water for the wintertime. All the houses for the animals that are out there, that are there all year long, have heated insulated houses, then also have heaters that are inside of them, can be the floor heaters and wall heaters based on it. None of the species that can't adapt to be out there, because, you know, especially this winter, it was nice and cold, um, are left out there, that's why certain ones are brought in. Uh, you know, the, we've got two armadillos, they can go outside and play in the summertime, but in an enclosure that's enclosed also, but they live inside. I mean, really, that's where most of them are. Everything has a double doorway as far as if you're walking in, we're not required to have that, but you've got tops and that, even the hallway, so to go into where any animal enclosure is outside, you walk into a gate, you've got a netted top on, then you could, before you would even walk into where any animal enclosure is, just for safety for them.
So, the row of trees to the west of the property, is that on yours? Did you plant those?
Those right there?
Yes.
No, that is my neighbor next to me, those were planted by, actually, the neighbors previously.
So one of the conditions also was that you would provide screening to hide this enough with shrubbery and whatnot?
Correct.
And I don't think, do you have any of that?
I'll tell you that I have attempted that with planting lots, I've planted over 100 trees, um, not had very good luck with some of that. In the meantime, then we've done, um, the green shade cloth just in the inner perimeter, not on the exterior part, is trying for that.
But that's not part of the screening that, uh, you see where I'm going here?
I do, I do.
So I, I would love to support you, because I think what you're doing is a noble cause, but you had 10 years to address these issues, you've exceeded your number of people, and you have not built the screening to what the code provided the first time, how could you come back and ask for a continued, can you attenuation? And I want you to, because I mean, I, I really do, I, I applaud what you're doing, but you're not complying, you're just doing your own thing, you're not applying yourself to fix what you said you would do.
Well, I was like, I have, it's, we have five years with it, again, I'm going to go on the appeal, that's something there with the screening, as far as asking like what it is, what's the natural screening that needs to be provided and have. I've got bamboo that I planted on the inside part here, um, I mean, I just don't have stuff that's grown that's really super fast, I'm not quite sure exactly.
You've had 10 years.
I haven't had 10 years.
You've had 10 years.
The, no, it was in 2015.
15?
It's five years they're asking for 10.
They're asking for 10, I guess, yes.
I, I might clarify that there was a stay when we appealed to Circuit Court on, on the additional restrictions, which would include all the issues you're talking about.
Okay, all right.
Uh, we would certainly comply.
I'm not for, yeah, I'm not familiar with that, so that's why I was just asking, and I'd say, I'm not condemning you, I'm just saying, we, you had time to get there, and so I, I don't see that in, in what we're seeing here, so.
It was a difficult decision, do we, do we do the investment that was required if the, uh, the court's not going to uphold, uh, the CUP? In other words, we can afford to provide the fencing, the, and et cetera, if the court then was going to say, no, you can't keep the servals, et cetera. I, I might mention with the, the servals, uh, that was the primary reason, uh, the three cats, four cat species, there was just no rhyme or reason why the commission excluded them. There was nothing in the record, and that was the basis of our appeal, that there was no findings of fact to justify the exclusion of those animals. So that's the, the issue that basically wound through the courts for four and a half years, and to the point that it got to, uh, where the judge said, well, the five years are almost up, why don't you just reapply, unless the county wants to provide the findings of fact, which the county decided not to.
Okay. So what was that, what was the outcome, is, is it, I'm sorry, David, what was the outcome of the court hearing? Did they?
The, the court hearing, uh, a judgment that basically, um, it's, it's part of the record, and, and Andy was up there with me, uh, uh, but basically what the court did was, they punted it, saying, you're going to have to go back and forward to the commission on a renewal, so there's no reason for us to get into these issues unless the county wants to file. The county, the court decided the county was required to file findings of fact, which the county never did. So, but the court kind of punted it, and, and Andy, if I'm misstating that, but that was my take on it.
Want to hear my part of it?
Yes, please.
So, obviously, once you guys make your, you know, recommendations, it goes to County Commission for final determination, there's a number of hearings held at County Commission, and I think Tim Flue, who's judge now, might have been the, the role lineman at that point, so, you know, long story short, it kind of bounced through a couple of different attorneys at County Council Office, and, you know, they had outside counsel for, you know, a while, was covering things. So, this remained pending a lot longer than it should have. I disagree that there was a stay on all of the conditions. I think there would have only been a stay on the conditions that were appealed, because, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Ford, but there was only, out of the 15, there was only like a handful that you contested, right? So I think the uncontested ones would have still needed to have been followed. So what basically what Judge Alexander ultimately said was, in the case of a contested hearing before the County Commission, there needs to be findings of facts and conclusions of law that then gets submitted so that the circuit judge can determine what the commission did and why they did it. And those were not done back in 2015 with the original application, so Judge Alexander basically was in a position where he couldn't read the minds basically was in a position where he couldn't read the minds of whoever the commissioners were at that time and substitute his own judgment. So he basically said, county, you can submit those now, but, you know, after talking to Kip, and we're within just a few months of the reapplication anyway, by the time we would have submitted that and gotten another determination from him, it would have probably been time for another application anyway, so we didn't bother. So there was not an actual finding from the court that the conditions, thumbs up or thumbs down, it was more procedural in nature.
Yeah, my issue is the fine line you're walking to get your conditional use permit, you should have been more proactive on a lot of the conditions that wasn't an issue.
That weren't contested in the beginning, yeah.
Would you agree to all the conditions today?
Would I agree to all the conditions that are listed on this new application today? I'd like clarification on the decree, but other than that, yes.
And what happens if you change your opinion in six months or a year, if there's a different animal or another different animal? Is that going to influence your decision at that time, or are you going to go ahead with what you want regardless of what the conditions said?
No, I would go along with the conditions, and at this point, there wouldn't be an animal that I could even get that would, that would break that. Like I said, lions, tigers, bears, large cats aren't anything that, you know, I can, would do, so, no, I wouldn't be coming back in six months, I'd scream for something that would, you know, be outside of what the conditions already asked for this time.
Can I add? Can I add one thing, Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So, the Land Development Code, as far as number of animals, if we're talking like farm type animals, the LDC has a table that will tell us, like a cow counts as one animal unit, a goat is like .2, and you're allowed one animal unit per acre. So the code does not tell me that with exotic dangerous wilds, so I have no idea what a serval counts as. So I can't, I think that may have been part of the reason that the Planning Zone Commission put numbers on it, because-
Right.
You've got to limit it somehow, but I don't have a table that tells me, you know, I, the dogs and cats, you know, you're allowed three dogs and four, four cats. That's easy, because the code tells me that, but not for the exotic stuff.
I say, I mean, this would be a slam dunk for you had you followed the conditions from your previous, I mean, I don't think there was, nobody would have denied you in any way, shape or form. The problem that we're all having is a problem, and I think, I can't speak for everybody for, but I think for me, you know, you say you would comply with those codes, whether it's five or 10 years, I thought it was 2011, they said 2015. Five years, you didn't do any of the stuff that the county had asked you, and you expected the county to supply you with a sign at some point in time. I think you have to put some initiative towards making this a true facility and, and bringing it up to what the county wanted. The way it's, the way it's set right now, it's hard for me, because, and it, it breaks my heart, I would love to support you, but I mean, you haven't given me any reason to do that, and if anything, and I don't know what the other guys have to say, but I mean, if it was, if we were to give you one, it would be a short one, a one-year period to bring you up to compliance, that's what I would recommend, and if you couldn't make it, then at that point, it would be gone, but.
That's what I was going to ask, can we do a CUP for 12 months?
You would need to change that condition, but yes.
Right, but at least at that point, we'll see if you follow through, I mean.
Couldn't, wouldn't that, sorry, I'm not interrupting you.
It's fine.
Wouldn't that be with going with one of the conditions that's listed on it, as far as, I mean, can we put it in to be evaluated in a year instead of going back through? Because if you just issue it for me and, like coming back evaluating, because then if I'm not following or breaking anything like that, then the CUP's taken away, instead of taking away the, you know, off board and making it to where instead of, like, because right now, renew is just reapplying? Like, would I then be reapplying, going through everything again, then that, or would it be, does that make sense what I'm asking?
Yes.
I mean, if you find the condition in there, asking for that, that within a year for it to be-
It does make sense, but how much code enforcement do we have to do that? And I think by holding your feet to the fire, you're more apt to get it done. I want you to succeed, don't get me wrong.
I want to succeed also, I don't want to move, but I don't want to put, you know, thousands of dollars into some trees out there to find out that then you say that I, you know, have to reapply and then-
Well, you wouldn't have anything to worry about if you made the compliance.
So, one of the reasons to do the one year and make her reapply would be that we would have to notify neighbors at that point, that we were having a public meeting again, but it could be, a condition could be worded where certain conditions would have to be, you could do a five-year period, but, and Andy, you can tell me if I'm wrong, but I think you could do five years, but say that this, this, and this needs to be complete within one-year timeframe. If not, then the conditional use permit would be revoked. So I think you could do it either way.
I, I think that would be acceptable. I think one of the, one of the problems we had, both the county and, and my client, was we were, it wasn't real clear what was enforceable, what wasn't. You know, we weren't cited during this five-year period for not complying with any of these conditions, and it's probably because the county thought the state order prevented that from happening, which, which was my opinion, something I worked out with Kevin Graham. But I, I, I can say, you know, your interpretation might be more accurate than mine, it's been a while on that, but that, that's the real concern. We, we are more than ready, willing, and able to make the investment required, but we, we had to have some certainty that we were going to get the CUP. And frankly, the CUP without the four cats, there was no way for our business plan to work. There, there's no way to house and feed all the other animals, because those cats were the moneymakers.
I think my issue with trying to approve this for five years with a 12-month or one-year review period is that we're going to get tied up in court for another four and a half years if you disagree at the one-year mark. The point of putting this on a 12-month or a one-year renewal is that it's over in one year. If you don't comply, we don't have to get tied up in court for another four and a half years.
So, but that's also that in a year, that I'm not, then guaranteed that I don't have to pack up and move and will be getting conditional use permit for the next five years?
Correct. If you comply, then you don't have any issues, but if you, if you don't comply, then we're right back here where we're at tonight.
In other words, it's easier to file lawsuits than to plant trees.
The, as, as I understand it, the planning commission's a recommending body to the County Commission.
Correct.
We, while, we could come back here in a year, and you may all be here, you may not, and whoever succeeds, you may not have any reason to believe they have to follow what we're saying, well, that's what they told us a year ago. Plus, we're embarking on a whole new form of county government that's going to take effect 2022? Progressing, so-
Right, right.
I'm not sure it's clear from the charter exactly-
Right.
-who the decision maker will be in terms, so I, I do like the suggestion of, of five years with kind of a clawback after a year if we haven't complied with certain things, if somehow, your attorney could figure out how to rock that, we would be supportive of that.
But as you stated, we are just an advisory board. You are going to have to argue this in front of the commission, whether we recommend approval or denial. But that's really what I'm looking at, is the items here were not even attempted, maybe they were, maybe they weren't, but they certainly weren't completed. But I certainly don't want the county to end up in court for another four and a half years over this issue yet again, because we're still dealing with the same issues that we dealt with in 2015, regardless of who was on this body or who was a county commissioner at the time. So, I just want some assurances that these things are going to get done, and at a one-year review period, if you disagree being an attorney, you're going to run and file an appeal, and we're going to be right back in court, and you're going to run it out for the five or the 10 years.
I, I can tell you personally, I'll be retired at this time next year, so it won't, it won't be me. But I, I will say this, had the County Commission adopted the recommendations of the planning commission five years ago, there had been no issue. We, we, we were, we were okay with those conditions, we would have complied with them. It's at the curve ball the county threw us at kind of, at the last minute, at the last hearing, that caused the appeal.
Well, there, there's a lot of conditions. The screening is a pretty minimal item, in my opinion. Lights pointing down, there's no lights to even worry about. Emergency operating plan, is there one on file?
I have, I have that one, it's been, I mean, I can provide it to see, but I didn't want it to be part of public.
That was a stipulation in the CUP five years ago, that the county would have a EOP, a copy of your EOP.
The copy of the emergency plan? I was like, Mr. Cap had a copy of, but it wasn't something that we went to public because it was based on where it shows everybody's location, every lock, every camera, every safety thing, and that being something access to, to the public makes, you know, makes that unsafe for all of the animals and people on property.
So, if you count the porcupines, groundhogs, the tortoises, the goats, the dogs, the cats, how many animals, regardless of age, are on the property today?
65.
65.
Mr. Chairman, we should ask if there's any other proposition here? Yeah, Chairman, I don't know if we have, we have folks in the audience, and I want to make sure if they're proponents or opposition, they have a chance to speak as well, because it is getting late.
Alright.
Let me, Chairman, if I could explain one more thing, just so I can address maybe the court thing?
Yes.
That's an anomaly. It would not take that long normally to go through court. Once County Commission takes action, they, they're time limited within which to file for judicial review, and if they miss their time on it, then it, it's an automatic win for the county. So they can't wait to appeal it a year or two later if they decide there is a dispute later. So if you were to do the five-year with one of the conditions being within 12 months, you've got this for 12, you've got this for five years, but you have to do A, B, and C within the first 12 months, or else, and then it comes down to the codes enforcement side of it.
Four and a half years, trust me, was not anything that we wanted for it to go that long, like I was on asking, but with all the stuff going on, I mean, the hands are tied and just told, you get your day when it's scheduled.
Alright. Alright, thank you, Jennifer. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to comment on the case being heard? If you could state your name and address, please, sir.
Greg Ayers, 8006 Windsor Drive, Kansas City, Missouri. I own the property to the south of Ms. Castman. In fact, 50%, over 50% of my property borders that south, yeah, right there. I have to disagree with Mr. Ford here that everybody that disagrees with her is two blocks away. I'm right behind her, and I disagree with her. There was, she didn't follow the rules of the 30 animals. It looks like the containment area has expanded since this first started, along with, there was no foliage put on my border to protect me from seeing that. And there's also an issue of, this is sort of like a containment animal facility, where is the waste going? The water runoff runs off on the west side of her property, down across my neighbor on the west of me, and across my property into a ditch that runs into that lake. And there's at times that I see stuff in the water runoff that is not, is animal waste. And so there's no provision to stop that, and that's a health risk for my family and the neighbor's family. So, those are the three points that I want to, to make that I disagree. This is a residential area, was a residential area when we moved there in '05, and it still should be this kind of facility. I like it, but this is something for the coun, out in the country where farmland and stuff like that is.
I agree, very well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ayers. Well, we'll-
We'll finish up with you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to comment on the case being heard? Can you turn on the microphone there, please? Just push the button by, on the base there.
Rachel Love at 2620 Northeast 45th Street, Kansas City, Missouri. I am also a teacher within the North Kansas City School District. I work with Jennifer with these programs, and the, this program is so beneficial, I take them to school. This year alone, because of COVID, my students and the building of Gateway was able to interact and see some animals that they would not have normally been able to see. With, due to COVID, we have been doing lots of recording with like Midtown and Public Library, but the education based on this is so important, and I just would really like to make sure that this is able to be continued.
Alright, very well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to comment on the case before us? Can you turn on the microphone there, it's a little button on the base? Yep, thank you.
It's green now, something must be on. My name is Sondra Casterman, I'm Jennifer Casterman's mother. My address is 12223 McKee Road North, Excelsior Springs, Missouri, 64024. My daughters put her heart and soul into her animals, they're her babies. She has no children, she has no husband, the animals are her kids, and she loves every one of them. She interacts with them daily, they trust her and they love her. Several things I think the commission has missed this evening, because they've kind of rolled over it, was the CUP was issued for five years, which I believe you did get Staff has recommended this next CUP for 10 years, is what Kip had in there, if you do go forward with it, or the commissioners do. The other issue is, she said she had planted 100 trees, and that they hadn't all lived. So, you know, she's had a lot of expenses with the court case. She has put up fencing and stuff that was there, shading, different green stuff. I apologize to the neighbor that sits down at the bottom of the hill, because the hill does go down back there, that there's no trees up there that he, you know, can't see, but it's a hill. Trees are probably going to have to be 20, 30 feet tall before he's not going to be able to see the back of her house, just to come look at the landscape that's there. When you say she didn't comply with things that, in the conditions that she should have, again, things were brought up, the attorney and her both said, you know, why are you going to put hundreds and thousands of dollars into something that you're going to turn around and say, you cannot keep that way? As I did say, she did plant plants, she has put up other fencings and stuff there, so I just wanted to clarify a few issues.
Alright, thank you, Mrs. Casterman.
My name's Dylan Brantham, I live at 5907 North Euclid Avenue in Gladstone, Missouri, 64118. I actually work with these animals, and I have been with Jennifer for over five years. I'm 73 years old, and if, if anybody was going to be afraid of any of these animals for any reason, I don't know what it would be, I'll be honest with you. I walked into these enclosures, and that's another thing, you wanted to know about the size of their enclosures, it's up to pass it, it's up to the stand- It's up to pass it, it's up to the standards of what the USDA says it has to be. They do not let these animals stay in something that's not fit. They have to have enrichment areas, they have their enclosures. Like Jennifer said, we have water, water for them in the winter that are heated. Their houses are heated. These animals are treated nicer than some people I know. I love these animals, I'm not afraid of any of them. I work with them every day and I just don't see that there's a reason that she can't keep these animals.
All right, thank you.
Hello, my name's Kelly White. I live at forty-four eleven North Jury Avenue. I as well work with Jen and have volunteered with her for about seven years now. I've done numerous library programs, which the, you know, Kansas City Library has, you know, written her a nice letter. Her animal educational programs really do bring education on animals that kids might not even see, but in a book, you know, on TV. And just like she said, with preservation of species, how are you supposed to save something if you can't? Nobody even knows it exists or they don't care about it. I take care of these animals part of the time, she does the rest of the week. I'm not afraid of any of them, we care for them properly. There's double locks on everything. I even get frustrated sometimes because there's so many doors and locks I need to go in and out of with my hands full. But she does everything for a reason. Everything that she does is to protect these animals and protect them from getting out. She has a huge fence around. We had, you know, talked about trying to get it green instead of the black. It would look better, yes, but as she talked about expenses, we have put up bamboo, which is more natural. You know, I, I realize that, you know, maybe she was supposed to plant some trees, but we have really, really tried to comply, you know, as much as we could with going back and forth with what was right and just or what they accepted or didn't accept. But I just, I firmly believe that it's so, so important, because here, probably within ten to twenty years, you probably won't see a serval, unless Jen or one of, you know, the other people that are breeding them have them, because there, everything is becoming extinct quickly. So, I do feel like it's very, very important for her to continue this program and there's not a better person to do it.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to comment on the case being heard? Thank Jennifer, you don't want to come back up? You're welcome to step up if you like.
I just want to, I wanted to, Jennifer Casterman, seventy-eight fifteen Hauser Street, Kansas City, Missouri, six four one six seven. I want to address the animal waste part that was brought up by the neighbor. We've, and these ladies here can tell you, pick up all the animal waste. We even pick up, you know, I mean, there's not stuff from the dog, you know, and the other neighbors, I'm sure especially with three, seven, ten, fourteen acres, aren't picking up all their waste. Ours is disposed of. I have no idea as far as something, a waterway coming down that's running off there, other than just, you know, I mean, what natural water sources. I've got animals above other animal enclosures on the hill there. I don't, I can't have their waste running down into the ones below them, so, I mean, we're very proactive with that. So, nothing's running off and running into somewhere else. I know that, like, in burn trash, but we don't even burn the waste there on the property, it's disposed of somewhere else.
All right, thank you.
We've got one last question for Jennifer here and I'm, I'm, I wanted to address this lady over here first. I don't think anybody's questioned in your teaching abilities and the importance that it might be. So, nobody's, that's all good. We're all supportive of that, I think. My question for Jennifer is if we were to pass this and recommend this on to the commissioners, how do you get from sixty-seven to thirty? Can you give up thirty-seven animals?
I don't think that that's fair to do.
So, then you're telling me you can't comply to the conditions in the report?
You asked if I could comply to the conditions in this report, not in the conditions from the original report?
And just to be clear, Commissioner Higgins, the staff report in front of you does not have a condition that limits the animals. The resolution passed in two thousand fifteen did have that condition.
So, we would be complying with the twenty, the fifteen items from two thousand fifteen, plus these additional ten that we're adding now?
Well, you would have to add to the existing ten. You would have to pass, vote, you know, vote on adding additional conditions. If you wanted to put a, a limit on the animals, we would need to add a condition that limited it to thirty animals. Now, if you wanted to, we could look at the different conditions from the two thousand fifteen and go through them one by one and say this is what you would need to add if you wish to do that.
Just to clarify, is there anything in the planning and zoning code right now that limits the number of animals in this facility?
No, not that I'm aware of.
So, if we approve this, we could have another sixty animals in five years?
Well, so, if, if we're going to put a number of animals on as a condition, then we need to spell out how staff enforces that condition. Are we going to do a yearly inspection? Because that's not, you know, some, some of these animals are inside, so I can't see them from just doing an outside walking of the perimeter. And then we're going to have to go through each animal, animal by animal, and agree this is exotic. Are we doing total animals or are we just doing the exotic? So, that would have to be something that would have to be discussed, because I know Jennifer has a couple concerns that animals I'm considering exotic, she would not. So, we'd need to go through them one by one and then put something in the condition that says staff will inspect July first every year or twice a year, whatever the commission chose.
We'd certainly be okay with, with a limitation of sixty-five and the current configuration between the exotic and the other animals in terms of, of a number that, on that. I, I, I do want to just add just a couple of things before you make your decision. My client's not a rule breaker. She would not have continued to be licensed by the USDA if she didn't comply with all the regulations, which she has done from the beginning. So, she will comply. The, one of the things I tried to do five, six years ago with both this commission and the, the Clay County Commission and actually the judge, was actually bringing some of the animals. And I never could get permission to do that. But you really have, I think, a different opinion of these animals. I know they're called exotic and dangerous, but, you know, most of the, most of the cats look like cats, just a little bit larger. The, kind of one of the ironies in all this is had Jennifer been licensed by the USDA in two thousand eleven, she would have been grandfathered in and wouldn't need a CUP for the exotics. So, I know that she wasn't.
She would still be limited to the number of animals and stuff that she would have, though.
That just shows you the importance that whoever wrote that code placed on USDA as being legitimate licensing source for exotic animals.
And I appreciate your, your candor, but she is a, a rule breaker. And I'm saying it's a bad deal, but she had thirty animals, she's got sixty-seven now. So, that doesn't comply with your statement.
Well, I, I respectfully disagree with your interpretation.
Sure.
We, that's one of the issues we specifically appealed on.
Well, do any other board members have questions for Jennifer? For any?
One, one last time. How, how many total animals do you have now?
Currently sixty-five.
Okay.
Outside, I don't exceed the thirty.
Yeah.
And that's counting the dogs, the chickens, goat.
I think you named off thirty species. All right, Jennifer, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I, I kind of have mixed emotions and I'm with Chris that I.
You know, I, I would like to have some, I mean, and I hate to, I hate tabling things, but I think, you know, I got some questions that probably need to be answered. I would like to talk with Kip and Debbie on as well. And, I mean, I don't know. What, it doesn't matter. If you guys want to make a vote, we can make a vote, but. I would, I would make a motion to table.
Do we have a second to table? Or do you want to, let's discuss and then lay some options out?
Yeah, absolutely. You know what? I mean, I'd love to hear what you guys' opinions are on it.
Well, there's a motion. Do you have a second or there's no second to table?
And can we clarify the motion? Is it to continue it to the next planning and zoning commission, commission meeting, the next scheduled?
Yes, yes.
And then, real quick, and then if no one seconds it right now and we discuss it a little bit more, can we have another motion from someone else to continue it? Okay.
So, we have a motion on the floor to continue the case to the next meeting. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Can you have discussion on the motion? Because there's a motion in a second.
Okay, right.
Pardon me?
Since you got a motion and a second, now you can have discussion on the motion.
We can, we can, we don't have a roll call vote?
So, you can, no, you can discuss the motion.
All right.
And then you could have a vote.
Okay.
So, if you want to discuss it, you can discuss it and then we can vote.
So.
Do you want to discuss it publicly?
I mean, it doesn't matter, like I say, I mean.
I, I get where everybody's coming. I mean, yeah, she probably.
You know, I don't want these people to think that I have a passion for the animals that do. I think what they're doing is great. I, I don't think they've abided by the conditions that were set forth by the county. And whether they agree or disagree with them, they didn't abide by those. So, how can we move forward and make them comply when, you know, and, and obviously she's got sixty-five animals now, so we've doubled the size of what the conditionary was for five years ago.
What we're, what we've got here is an unlimited
I know.
number of animals.
And I don't, and I think, I think we have to take in Kip's recommendation of either denying or modifying this. And maybe by tabling this, this gives them time to come back and review with Kip to maybe make some changes as well.
Okay, because I, I would agree with that. Because I mean, yeah, there's definitely some changes to this. If it were get, if it were, if I were to vote for an approval tonight, it would, there would definitely be some changes. There's no question.
Right. I don't know if we're qualified to, to zero in on the details of the changes, on the number of different cats that are preferred or, you know.
Yeah, I think at this point, it's tabled. Yeah, I think it's tabled, we can talk to Kip, they can get together again and we get together next month and.
Any discussion amongst you all, of course, would have to be at the meeting.
Right.
Right.
But if you've got questions for staff on or on, and what was the issue? Do you do a five-year within one year stipulation?
Well, we're here now, let's hash it out. I mean.
We, we can do one of three things. Number one, I think we're going to table it till next meeting. Number two is we can deny it flat out. Number three is we could do a five-year CUP with a twelve-month review. And I, we've already had five years to, to abide by the first CUP and we have failed to do that. But I, I, I support what you're doing. I was raised by teachers and, and I believe in what you're doing, but.
We're trying to find a way to get you guys to do what you're doing.
You're not playing by the rules.
But by play by the rules.
That's our issue, you know.
I think what you're doing is noble cause, but I think we got to get there in a way that meets the balance that was set for you.
Yeah, I, I would move forward with tabling it till next month.
And if we table it, I would recommend that Jennifer and, and staff get together. And, and if you want to help us draft your plan and approve your plan, but right now, you're not playing by the rules, you know.
And you're welcome to reach out to each and every one of us individually. I think everybody here on the staff would be more than happy to sit and talk with you.
No.
So, we want to call for a
No.
roll call vote on the tabling it till next meeting?
Yeah, I, I think, I think tabling it probably is more good.
Yeah.
You ready for roll call?
Roll call vote, please.
This is a motion to continue to the next planning and zoning commission meeting. I've got Terry Griffin. David Rotis. Chris Higgins.
Approved.
Brad Scarlett.
Approved.
Marvin Davis.
Approved.
And Chairman Tom Decker.
Approved.
Motion carries.
Can I ask what the next date is?
We're still in session.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was just wanting to get on my calendar.
We're still in session.
Well, I think that concludes our meeting for the evening. That was all the cases we had. If the manager has any comments or any advice from legal in executive session?
Yeah, so I just had a couple of comments. So, the previous cases from the last planning and zoning commission meeting, which was Home, Holmes Hills Estates, which was the six ten-acre lots off Hundred Twenty-Second Street, that one was approved. Myers Creek off of Thirty-three Highway was a twenty-eight acre lot. The seven acre lot was approved. And Creekside Ridge, which was up off CC Highway and King Road, it was a, I think, a thirteen acre lot and two fives. They were all approved by the county commission. So, for tonight's agenda, just for the record, the first three cases will go to county commission at the date listed, April twenty-second. And then the third case will come back, or the fourth case will come back next month at Planning and Zoning Commission. That's all I have, Chairman.
Okay, that's it. There's no other business before, so I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
I can move to adjourn.
Second, very well. Roll call vote then?
Uh, you can just adjourn.
All right. Does anybody have a last one? I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I, I just wanted to get the date on my calendar for your next meeting.
First Tuesday in May.
First Tuesday in May.
It's always, always the first Tuesday.